Then do we ready to go?
We're ready.
Okay. Uh, looks like it's seven o'clock, so I will call the Board of Aldermen Regular Session to order. Uh, please stand and join Alderman Atkins in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the country for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Uh, first item on the agenda is number three on the agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Alderman Neil at all?
Motion to approve Bill Number twenty-nine ninety-six dash twenty-three, one-ten Smithville Tiff Plan and Redevelopment Agreement, Second Reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, I'll say it.
And first we have a presentation from Megan Miller, I believe.
And Mayor, actually, I'd like to make a couple of comments to clarify a few items which have been discussed over the last several months. The Tiff redevelopment plan is a document reviewed by the Tiff Commission this spring, and it outlines the details of the project. This document includes statutorily required information regarding Tiff. The Tiff agreement is a contract between the city and the developer outlining the details regarding implementation of the plan, including the maximum amounts of reimbursable project costs that the developer can receive. Again, this is a contract outlining the requirements and responsibilities of each party. Simplified, this evening you have two bills before you. Bill Number twenty-nine ninety-six twenty-three approves the Tiff documents, both the plan and the agreement, while Bill Number twenty-nine ninety-seven twenty-three activates the collection of Tiff revenues within the project area. As you know, since the Tiff Commission review of the plan, the city has been in negotiations with the developer on the elements of the Tiff agreement. Megan is here this evening to go through information relating to that document.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Hello, everyone. I am Megan Miller with the Law Firm of Gilmore and Bell, and we are the city's Economic Development Council. And I just wanted to touch on a couple of things, um, before we started. So, per the redevelopment agreement, the Tiff is capped at one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand, thirty-one dollars total, plus interest at a capped rate. That interest could fluctuate lower than the capped rate. That rate will reset annually. So annually, the rate will set, it could fluctuate lower than the capped rate. The capped is the maximum. So, subject to a meeting with the school district at the end of June, we have, uh, included further clarification language that states that regardless of the amount of Tiff revenues that flow into the special allocation fund, the developer is limited to the reimbursable project cost cap, subject to the provisions of the agreement. So unless there is a capital contribution, which we have discussed, pursuant to the statute, we cannot single out a single taxing jurisdiction to be limited to a certain amount of revenues. That is a statutory provision that limits us in that capacity. The current reimbursable project costs are as follows. We have money going to a private land purchase, demolition and infrastructure, and initial commercial tenant hard construction costs. Pursuant to the redevelopment agreement, the developer will have to apply for these reimbursable project costs. There's an application attached to the back. The city and I will review that application, which will consist of invoices, it will have checks. We will make sure that what the developers requesting reimbursement floor falls within the categories provided in the project budget. We have negotiated, the city, the amounts of reimbursement must fit within the amounts provided in that project budget. It cannot exceed the amount for any single line item. So if, you know, for an example, the demolition cost is four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. If it comes in at five hundred thousand dollars, they receive four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's limited to that maximum amount in the project budget. If it comes in at three hundred thousand dollars, they receive three hundred thousand dollars. They cannot move that additional one hundred and eighty thousand dollars to any other line item. It can't shift. It has to stay for that particular line item within the project budget. The developer will then receive, if the project application is approved, the developer then receives money as it is generated within the Tiff from an account called the Special Allocation Fund that is held by the city. The statute requires the, the, um, developer to show the amount of pilots and eats that can be captured from within the Tiff, the costs of, to the taxing jurisdictions, which is what you see in the CBA attached to the Tiff plan. The redevelopment agreement, which again, we've stated is the contract between the city and developer, that provides how this Tiff plan is implemented and where the capped reimbursable project has their costs are set. And again, we'll say that's that approximately one point one million dollars. The approximately three point eight million shown in Exhibit D to the Tiff plan are potential revenues that the Tiff could generate if there was not a cap in place. But as we previously stated, we have negotiated a cap that limits what revenues can flow and how much revenues can flow to the developer. I also just want to state again, to, to add on to what Cynthia said, the Tiff plan is what is required by statute. It provides all the statutory requirements that we have to have. The redevelopment agreement implements it. It kind of has the nuts and bolts of the, the project. We just want to note also certain clawbacks that we have negotiated into the redevelopment agreement. Um, the project must be substantially completed within three years or the Tiff is terminated. There's a requirement that any business within the commercial space must be a sales tax generator. And then again, we've talked about how we've limited, the statute allows for twenty-three year Tiffs. We have limited this to a maximum of twenty years. So once the Tiff is done, either at twenty years or, um, at, if it pays off earlier, it could be twelve years, it could be fifteen years, it could be twenty. It could be anything in between there. When the developer has either received all of their reimbursable project costs up to the capped amount plus that capped interest, or we've hit the maximum term, the Tiff gets terminated. At that time, the remaining money in the special allocation fund beyond what is owed to the developer is then distributed pro rata back to the taxing jurisdictions, and the city passes an ordinance to terminate the Tiff. It's a pretty simplistic process to, to terminate it. So I'm available for any questions if you have them. Thank you.
I have a question, Megan. Can you tell me the, uh, cap interest rate?
The capped interest rate? So we had negotiated, the capped interest rate is at prime, so eight point two-five. So that's the maximum amount the interest rate can be. It can fluctuate below that.
Okay, but it can't fluctuate over that.
It cannot fluctuate above eight point two-five.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
No other questions from the board? We'll open public comment.
Dr. Moss.
And just a reminder for the audience, please state your name, address, did you have two minutes?
Yep, yes, Mark Moss, sixteen, seven, three, one, Riverview Road. Thank you, Mayor and Board of Aldermen, for me being able to share with you our concerns regarding the one-ten Tiff proposal. The district agrees, the former hospital is distressed, and there needs to be a new development. We're excited, there's interest in that development, but remain greatly concerned on the incentives provided. Our understanding is that the June fourteenth, um, revisions that were shared with the Tiff is still the remaining Tiff plan. If there's been changes, please let us know. As Ms. Blimker will share, we have asked for clarification on the one point two million dollars, which I believe the attorney for Gilmore Bell has tried to share. We still have concerns on the three point eight million available regarding this Tiff. In December, our board passed a resolution regarding Tiffs. In twenty-twenty, the city of Smithville adopted policy and had specific language regarding Tiffs as well. The one-ten Tiff proposal does not meet either of these organizations' policies or resolutions. The district resolution calls for a maximum fifty percent tax abatement, not supporting residential projects, and a ten-year cap on commercial and retail projects. The city of Smithville's policy is similar with minor differences. It remains the consistent fifty percent cap, fifteen instead of ten years on length, and discourages residential for Tiff assistance. And any mixed-use property which this is should skew retail or commercial. The one-ten Tiff proposal is eighty-eight percent residential, is a twenty-year length, and is at seventy percent abatement of property taxes. The school district is funded at sixty percent, relying on local property taxes. And the state has kept our funding relatively flat over the last several years. The local community continues to be relied upon to fund our schools. Repeatedly has been shared with me that this project is the exception. Since the adoption of the policy manual, this is the only Tiff brought forth, and exceptions were found on length, residential as the primary part of the Tiff, and the percentage amount of the property taxes. It has also been shared that this may not be in place for twenty years. I believe you will find that the reality is very few Tiffs end early. That would be the exception, not the rule. The one-ten Tiff defers property taxes that would benefit all jurisdictions and puts additional burden on the Smithville taxpayers. Thank you for your time.
Jeff Blomker.
Jeff Blomker, fourteen oh four Northeast one hundred eighty-second Terrace. Good evening, Mayor and Board. Uh, I'm here this evening to reiterate the position of the Board of, the School Board. To be clear, I and the district remain opposed to any residential Tiff. We have continuously shared that residential Tiffs place an extraordinary burden on the school district while also adding students to our roles. At the cost of eleven thousand, twenty dollars per student, adding additional students to the district through residential property while capturing the very tax dollars designed to fund those children's education puts us in a bad spot. By approving this as a residential Tiff, it sets a dangerous. When I spoke with you last, we acknowledged that this is indeed a community priority and shared that a total contribution from the district of approximately one point two million is something we could live with and still complete our mission. Furthermore, we ask that you work to limit that contribution to the blight, remediation, and commercial aspects of this project. I want to acknowledge that you have worked to attempt to meet both those asks. As Dr. Moss shared, however, we have concerns that this package is currently structured, still speaks of a cap plus interest. But the project plan also projects that the payments and incidental sales tax captured will total the three point eight million referenced in Appendix D. We've asked privately and publicly for that clarification of that one point one million dollars and failing that clarification, at least delay this vote until we can receive the information that we asked for during our Freedom of Information request. Uh, as we have not received that information, as it currently is in process, and it appears that you are indeed headed to a vote this evening, I'm asking each of you individually to affirm as you vote that you believe that this, uh, this project is indeed capped at that one point one, one, five, zero, three, one, plus interest amount. We, we need that to, as Exhibit A in any future, uh, lawsuit should this go forward. We thank you for your time and your clarification, your work on behalf of the, the community.
Harold Dawkins.
Harold Dawkins, two oh two Highland Drive. Um, I have brought in some more signatures and, uh, I believe we have around a hundred and fifty signatures so far. So I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of this and, and include us in the decision. Thank you.
Deborah Garrison.
Well, first of all, I have to have a question. On such an important occasion, why are mayors not here? And I hear that he, he's out of town, but it looks to me like he could have picked another time. This is such an important subject, I can't believe that he didn't think it was important to bother to be here. Now, a lot of you don't know who I am, and first of all, I'm not, I'm not a man, or I would have taken my hair off, but I cut my own hair and it doesn't look too good, so I'm a woman. That's why I didn't take my hat off in reference to the flag. I want to tell you a little story about three ministers, and they were discussing how they took up their offerings. And I'm, I've been all three of these denominations, I'm picking some out of the air. The Methodist minister said, well, we draw a circle, and then we throw the offering up in the air, whatever falls outside the circle belongs to God, whatever falls inside belongs to us. And then the Baptist minister said, well, we draw a circle, but we do it a little different. We throw it up in the air, and whatever falls outside of the circle belongs to us. Did I say that wrong? And what falls inside the circle belongs to God. Well, the Pentecostal minister, which I've been most of my life, said, well, we do kind of the same thing, but we don't bother with circles and such. We just throw that money up in the air, and whatever God wants, he keeps. Well, I kind of feel like that's, that is representative of this council. We talk, we talk, we talk, nobody listens. We got sidewalks up here that everybody showed up and begged, please don't put those in. People don't even like to drive down our streets now because you can't park. And the last time we had, we had an event, they were parked all the way down to the Housing Authority where I live on both sides. Now, you're giving away the city parking lot. Where are these people going to park for the next thing? And in case you don't know who I am, I'm the lady that griped and whined whenever the Obama came out with a tax and I, I don't remember what we called them, had a stroke, but let me look here. Stimulus, whenever he came out with a stimulus. Well, I had whined and griped until we got the stimulus money. We got sidewalks all the way from the old dollar store up to McDonald's. We got two crosswalk lights put in. I'm the one that got that done. And I don't like to be pushy, but this is ridiculous. None of you listen to us. Everybody talks and everybody gets on the, a lot of you get on, I can't say who, but somebody was on the internet tonight arguing about it, saying, well, if, if you took a poll, they were talking about our leader here. They said, if you took a poll, are you sure you polled a hundred percent of the people? Well, out of all the people that have ever been on this board, there's two people that come to mind. One of them was our mayor, and she lives up on the house on the hill. I think you know who I'm talking about. I don't want to mention names. The other one was Bob Foreman. He listened, and we got things done back then. We got lots of things done. Now nothing gets done. Everybody argues, everybody's spinning their wheels, and I think there could be a better use of that stimulus money. Believe me, you ought to be in this wheelchair going dum 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 up and down the sidewalks and going over in potholes trying to get to the store. We don't even have sidewalks to some of these places. If I want to go to the Dollar General, I have to go down by the cemetery. There's no sidewalk. I'm out in the street. And I think people need to start listening instead of, instead of saying, well, we're going to do what we want. There's going to be another election, and you're going to see me out there with the biggest sign I can hold, and I'm going to be, I'm going to be campaigning against every one of you that I can, unless I'm in the hospital, which might be.
Ally McLean.
Good evening. My name's Ally McLean. I live at one zero zero four Cone Flower. Here we are at the Tiff Second Reading, and here we are at a crossroads. All that is left is to turn down a residential Tiff because it's not economic development. Ask any county commissioner in the state of Missouri, and they'll all tell you the same thing. Do the right thing and vote down the Tiff. Vote no on the Tiff and put the people before the money. Isn't it time to do the right thing? Do what's right for the people and the public schools. How do you want to be remembered? Is this the legacy you will leave the residents of Smithville with? What legacy do you want to be remembered by? I hope to God it's not this one. Thank you.
James McLean.
Good afternoon. My name's James McLean. I live at ten oh four Cone Flower Street here in Smithville. Thank you. You know, all of the numbers and legal talk is very impressive. But the bottom line, when the smoke clears, you're all elected to represent we, the people. Now, I understand the only reason we don't have a whole city in here tonight, because most people just want to go to work, come home, have dinner with the family, go fishing or watch a game on the weekend, and just trust the elected officials to represent them. I'm sorry, but it seems to me that that's just not happening nowadays, at least for the most part. And I'm not saying every individual, I'm just simply saying for the most part, the way our government works. You know, I stood out here on this, uh, picket about this Tiff. It truly disgusts me when people pull up, say, hey, what, what's going on here? And we explain it to them, and they say, I support you, but I can't sign that. I don't want to bring on any trouble. Now, I want that to sink in, people to think about, why would a citizen say I'm not going to sign that and voice my opinion because I don't want to start any trouble? I just want to think about that. Now, we got over a hundred signatures saying, hey, we're trying to get your attention. You know, I don't know how else to put it, but again, in a free country, we should be able to just trust the officials to represent us. And I'm asking for people to think about that and do that, you know? The thing I want people to understand, too, the people of this country, this, this town, along with freedom comes responsibility. You know, I really don't, I mean, what I mean by that is it's time for Americans to get involved. Get to the polls, get involved. And I'm, I'm not trashing everybody here. I know some folks here, you know, say, wait a minute, let's listen to the people, hold on. But I personally think this whole Tiff thing is a done deal. I don't think what these folks have to say, or their signs have really mean anything, because already the decision's been made. Again, take on your responsibility of freedom. Get involved. Thank you.
Deborah Dodson.
Good evening, everyone. I sent you emails. Thank you. But I'm going to put
Deb, don't forget your name and address, too, please.
Deborah Dodson, two zero zero four Northeast one hundred ninety-six Place, Smithville, Missouri. For months, a small but very vocal group has continually bashed our lovely town. Elected officials and city staff are publicly harassed, mistreated, and maligned. Ugly innuendo and rumors are frivolously tossed like feathers in the wind. Some seniors now believe that the city is trying to get rid of them, force them out of the senior center. Local developers and business owners are portrayed as greedy, selfish, and corrupt. I've asked people, where are you getting this nonsense? It's always, they said. They are misleading people and creating chaos instead of bringing the community together in a positive way. They have deliberately tried to divide and drive a wedge between the taxpayers, seniors, young adults, and families. Taxpayers are being manipulated by fear. The sky is falling. The city must be stopped. We are better than that. Smithville is better than that, and we must stop this malicious nonsense. Here's a news flash. The same tired political rhetoric was used during the Marketplace Tiff. Now we have a wonderful new grocery store, serves our area and many others. The sky did not fall. This important project is an expression of people's vision for downtown, an attractive, modern, live, work, play, walkable environment. The project adheres to the comprehensive plan, the blueprint for moving the city forward based on the input of numerous Smithville citizens over a long period of time. The Tiff Commission, an ethical, law-abiding, highly respected group of leaders, approved it by a large majority. The local developer has given untold balance of goodwill and support to this community and has come forward with a solid plan. Please do not let political rhetoric divide our town. The sky is not falling. Please approve the Tiff project so that we can move forward to the future that this community envisioned together. I repeat, this community envisioned together. The boards have listened to the community over and over. We had a strategic planning session with many breakouts over cokes and Pepsi and pizza. Many people attended those, and this is pretty much what they said they wanted. Please vote yes. Thank you.
Pat Luce, are you here?
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. I'm Pat Luce, three hundred Maple Lane, Apartment One. Mayor Bowley, Alderman. The Old Hospital. Those three words have been repeated countless times these past few months. The Old Hospital was once an iconic building civilizing our forward-thinking community. But that was in nineteen thirty-eight, and the building has since outlived its purpose and usefulness. Until now. Nearly three hun, nearly one hundred years since the building opened, it is well past time to move forward and transform that property to the benefit of our community once again. That is why I fully support the Tiff project and the proposed development. No one disputes that this property is blighted and I saw a stain on our community. This property has changed hands numerous times over the past years. Yet no one has put together a plan to develop it and a determination to develop it until now. And that plan is from a local developer with a vested interest in making this community the very best that it can be. The Tiff Commission and its twelve appointed members were all formed pursuant to Missouri statutes. And the Tiff Commission members elected County Commissioner Jerry Nolte as the chair. The members consist of stellar community leaders who exhibit business acumen and critical thinking skills. After spending many hours reviewing documents, discussing the project, and hearing from all parties, the Tiff Commission voted overwhelmingly in favor of this project, nine to two. The commission felt this project was of benefit to our community. And there are many people in this community that feel the same way, but are not as vocal as those who oppose this. Many supporters are simply intimidated to speak up for fear of retaliation by the loud voice of opposition. You were voted into office to do what is best for Smithville. Please tune out the noise meant to distract you from this and do what is best. Please vote yes for the Tiff and the development project. Let's get behind this project. Let's do everything we can to make it a success. It will help ensure a more vibrant downtown, spur new business growth, and enable people who work here have the opportunity to, to live here as well. It will it will become this century's iconic symbol for our forward-thinking community. Thank you.
Mayor, that's all.
Thank you. Megan, could you address the school district's question on the cap again, please?
Yes, so, um, just again, the three point eight million that's in Exhibit D to the TIF plan is what could be generated. And again, I want to state that those are projections. They're projections that the developer has brought forward after working with the county, the county's assistant's office, you know, and experience, thinking that this is what the TIF could generate. That that's most likely not what it's going to be, right? It's just a projection. The TIF plan from June fourteenth states that, but again, the the redevelopment agreement, which is what we've been negotiating until up about two weeks ago, has the capped number in here. This is what we use to implement it. And so if you look, I'll just hold on. I have it highlighted. Give me a second. There's a subsection in here that specifically states, okay, so section three point oh one, limitation on reimbursement to the developer. It specifically states that the reimbursable project cost cap means one million one hundred and fifteen thousand thirty-one dollars. Again, yes, we state that there is a capped interest rate, so we we cannot project what that's going to be. The capped interest rate comes into effect. We've talked about this when the developer submits in a reimbursable project cost application for whatever that amount may be, but cannot exceed the one point one million. Interest will generate on that outstanding balance until monies start flowing in from the into the special allocation fund from the pilots needs that are generated within the TIF, and then that starts paying that down. So interest is only generated on that capped amount. It's not compounded. It pays off quick. The interest will pay off first, and then we'll go into the principal amount. I'm not sure. Does that help, Mayor? Does that-
That does. The other thing I'd like to emphasize is the one point one because it costs all taxing entities, correct?
Yes, the one point one million isn't just one taxing jurisdiction. That's that's total, right? So that's the total reimbursable project cost cap, and all TIF revenues go towards that cap. So the captured pilots and captured eats from all taxing jurisdictions will go to pay that cap, not just a single taxing jurisdiction.
Yeah, and also online, somebody just messaged the chat that says, you can't explain the capped interest rate because there isn't one. There is one. It is eight point two five. We reiterated that multiple times in the speeding now, and it is in the document, correct?
Yes, eight point two five is the capped interest rate. It cannot, it can't go above that.
I got a question.
Thank you.
With exception of the interest rate, what do we have in place to make sure that the cap is being met and stopped? Mr. Blonker did allude to, what do we have in place to make sure?
That we hit just the cap?
Exactly.
So again, the city holds the special allocation fund. They have to provide an application. That's checked by me. It's checked by the city. We make sure that the only thing that's being reimbursed are the things that we've provided for in the project budget. So we keep track of that, and Stephen generally, who does a fantastic job of this, will keep track of what monies flow to the developer, what the interest is generating, and then he keeps track of that. And then when that is paid off, he will note that, and then we end the TIF.
And this is public record?
Yes, this is all public record.
Excellent. Thank you.
Megan, don't run off yet.
Yeah.
Can you clarify the interest rate, eight point two five or lower? What's that on exactly and when it's paid out?
Yes, so the eight point two five capped interest rate again is just generated on the one point one five reimbursable project cost cap. It starts generating when a project, excuse me, a reimbursable project cost application is approved. And so once that is there, interest will generate on that amount. And then once monies begin flowing from the TIF, from the pilots and the eats, it will begin to pay down interest first, and then we'll pay off principal.
And that's monthly?
I think Alder- I think Alderman Russell's question was more towards what would the lower interest rate be based on, not-
Well, the lower interest rate-
Correct. He said it could, when you said it could be lower, it's prime plus one, correct?
Yeah, so it's prime, so the interest rate, it's prime plus one with a cap of eight point two five, which will reset annually. So if the interest rates go down and prime becomes four, then the interest rate is for that year at six percent. And so then that will generate at six percent until it resets the next year. So it has the capacity to go down, but it cannot go above eight point two five.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Did you, did you have one, Dan?
Nope.
That is, I do, I have, I guess for my clarification here, the first, the first thing I want to talk about is the transfer agreement, which is Exhibit G. And my understanding going into this, and maybe I missed that piece, but my understanding going into this was that the the property that the city owns was subject to an RFP and also to a a a plan that or a proposal that someone could bid on that property or not, instead of us transferring that. I did not understand that 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 was the the agreement at all, that we were transferring the property with that. I must have misunderstood that, Megan.
No, the transfer agreement is just there in case the developer at some point in time decides to transfer the property that he owns. There has been no formal agreement with the city-owned property. That is still subject to city processes, has to go through the RFQ process. But then if that property is sold to the developer and what the developer currently owns, they do have the option to transfer that property subject to the transfer agreement.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
That that threw me there. So thank you. Now, on the on the subject of the property as well, the twenty-three thousand two hundred forty-three dollars that came up, I still was fuzzy on where that dollar amount came from on the the actual property value. The cit- the city-owned property, that that dollar amount on the twenty-three two forty-three?
Yeah, that that number, and we had talked to the developer about that. That has no bearing. Just because that is in the budget does not mean that that's what the city is selling the property for.
Okay, so that that could go up or down?
Yes, that's, that has no bearing.
And then if it did go up, that would affect the agreement as well, right?
No, I mean, it would affect the overall project cost the developer is expending, but not the reimbursable project cost cap because that was one thing the city negotiated that the city did not want to have any reimbursable project costs going to pay for a city-owned property.
Okay, thank you. That answered that. Also, the the parking in here, and I looked for it earlier, I couldn't find it, but it said sufficient per code, and no code was referenced. I didn't see the code that that was pertaining to. I'm not sure if Jack is here to talk about that, but with eighty-five or eighty-four units, the I what I'm looking at is on wealthmanagement.com, parking equation for developers is one point six to one point eight parking spaces. That is, that's one thirty-six to one hundred and fifty-three additional parking spaces. I still do not see the parking being-
Alderman Russell, so it outlines per city code. This agreement relates only to the financing agreement. Once, if this is approved, this development would still have to go through the development review process and through the planning commission, and items like that would be part of that review. And that's why it's it's left relatively vague. It's per the planning code that is reviewed as part of the planning review process. This project will still go through all of the processes any development is required to go through within the community related to planning and zoning.
Okay, thank you, Cynthia. I just, I just know that it was, want to note that it was in these documents, right? So-
In the documents, it outlines it must comply with city code, and and then that, by virtue of that language, means it goes through that process then as well, Megan.
Okay, thank you. And and so that's a concern still, I think, that the parking issue and also the school board is an issue as well, and funding for the school, especially since it's residential. I mean, only because it's residential, I guess, is the huge impact on the school on what it means, you know, for that. And also, I know that we talked about the eight point two five cap unit. It's in here in Exhibit, that's toward the end here, two documents. It's on page two hundred on one ninety-nine, which mine is too, so anyway, let's see, it's this one here. Megan, and the next one, it still says seven point five in there.
Yes, that's the developer. That is what they had. That that, actually, they could attest to that, but I believe that is just what you had. The word I'm looking for, sorry, is thought that that's what your interest rate was going to be. Yeah, it was, I mean, that's an approximation of an interest rate for that that projection. Right now, what we have is the capped interest rate is prime. I mean, it is Wall Street Journal prime rate is eight point two five right now, and you can look that up.
Okay.
So that's that's partially the reason. A lot of the interest rate discussion was driven by their lender and then making sure the city was also not paying an astronomical interest rate. I mean, the city is capped. The city by statute cannot pay more than ten percent interest on anything. So, I mean, we were making sure we're staying with that, but also, you know, being sensitive.
Okay, thank you, Megan. I know that the seven point five oh to the eight point two five percent was figured to be around a hundred thousand dollars. I know the comment was made that it's only a hundred thousand dollars. Well, it's a hundred thousand dollars. It is taxpayers' money. So I think that needs to be made a point too. Just just as a sidebar here, the property owner had done a lot for this community. He also knew what he bought when he bought it, and I believe that the taxpayer should not have to pay for it. Thank you.
Megan, you you said a key point. I just want to go over a couple of numbers here. So the reimbursable project costs are four hundred and eighty thousand for demolition, four hundred and fifty thousand for other site work and infrastructure, one hundred and fifty-four thousand one hundred and twenty-one for private land purchase. And and for the record, no funds for the purchase of land from the city. Is that correct?
Correct.
And then thirty thousand nine hundred and ten for initial commercial tenant. It was key and that you said something earlier that if the demolition comes in at four fifty, it's four hundred and fifty thousand. Not saying it will. We don't know what these costs are going to be because it seems like-
These are all approximations.
These are approximations. So I just want to make sure. Also, the there's been a lot of 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 talk about city land, and again, just want to reiterate that this will go out for a request for proposal, correct?
Yes, it will still go through all city processes. The developer is aware of that. We've been talking about that since this began, that the property that the city owns would be subject to, obviously, the city processes to sell it, which includes an RFQ.
Okay, very good. And finally, I believe that all developers, at least my understanding, the city is to do a traffic study. And the traffic study, these are engineers that are are recognized by the state, and the traffic study has been done for this, and it was included in the TIF also, correct?
No, we had not. I, we did not have a traffic study. The traffic study is not required. A blight study is required.
A blight study, okay.
That's what's required, and was done by, ended by statute. It's required to be done by a third party, which just was done by a third party. And I mean, the the blight fact of this, it's, I think it's uncontested that it met the statutory requirement of light.
Very good. Thank you.
Yes.
So Megan, before you sit down, real quick. So one of the questions that keeps coming up is what is the cap on the total amount of interest? And I know that's a hard question to answer, but even if you just, so when I look at a, if somebody was paying a one point one million dollar mortgage over twenty years at eight point two five, they'd be paying about a million dollars in interest. But since this has reimbursables that are determined at a unpredicted schedule, right, it's hard to tell what the balance is going to be and what that interest is going to be year to year, correct?
Oh, yes, absolutely. I mean, it's it's hard to predict exactly what the interest is going to generate, again, because it fluctuates, and that rate resets annually, but can't go above eight point two five. So we can't really anticipate what the interest is going to generate, nor there's just a lot of factors up in the air, right? When do they apply for the reimbursable project costs? Is it next month? Is it next year? When will the TIF start generating money? So when will the project be finished? Will we start capturing revenues in twenty twenty-six? Will we start capturing revenues in twenty twenty-five? That, those all play into it.
So worst-case scenario, if it was eight point two five on the full amount, and the developer didn't turn in a single reimbursable until year twenty, that would be our max that we'd ever see paid out in interest, correct? If they're going to, they're going to make requests prior to that, and we're going to pay it down as money comes in, and they request them.
Correct. That is, effectively, this is a pay-as-you-go TIF, which that's what that does. The developer is reimbursed as the money flows into the special allocation fund.
Thank you.
Just a, just a question here. Linda, can we see what the chat, what's in the chat? I see some chat there. Can we see what the chats are? Maybe there's some information or questions on there.
So the, and Jennifer's question is similar to what I just asked. If this is paid off in five years, you're not getting twenty years' worth of interest out of this, they're getting whatever it was based on the rate that's for that five-year period.
Yeah, the question that was was just posted, all right, sauced by a moment ago, that if the developer has requested and receives the one point two million dollars-ish in five years, is that the end of the TIF? Yes, that's been, that's the total amount that is included in the redevelopment agreement, plus the interest.
Yeah, and and at five years, your total is about one point four million with the interest. Then depending on when the reimbursables coming and when they're paid out. But again, it has to generate that one point two million first before it can be reimbursed, and the property taxes in five years is probably not going to be one point two million dollars.
There's a question of, we can't explain the capped interest rate because there isn't one. The interest rate is capped. It is capped at prime plus two. It's reset on, excuse me, prime plus one. It's reset on an annual basis. If that amount, if the prime amount is six percent, that capped amount is seven percent. If the prime amount is eight point five, the interest amount is eight point two five because we are capped at eight point two five.
Any other questions from the board? I think Cynthia covered everything in chat. Clark, please call roll.
Alderman Yulidall?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
No.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Five one.
Motion, Carrie, this is Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to approve the One Ten Smithville Tax Increment Financing Plan, establish the redevelopment area, designate the redevelopment area as blighted, making other findings designating One Ten Smithville LLC as the developer of record, and authorizing the city to enter into a TIF redevelopment agreement between the city and One Ten Smithville LLC.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is number four, Bill number two nine nine seven dash twenty-three. Alderman Yulidall?
Motion to approve Bill number two nine nine seven two three, One Ten Smithville TIF redevelopment project, second reading.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Mayor, a second.
Alderman Hartman, thank you. Any public comment for this one, Linda?
No.
Thank you. Any discussion by the board? Clark, please call roll.
Alderman Hartman?
Aye.
Alderman Shipley?
Aye.
Alderman Atkins?
Aye.
Alderman Wilson?
Aye.
Alderman Yulidall?
Aye.
Alderman Russell?
No.
Five one.
Motion, Carrie, this is Wagner. Please read the bill.
An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor to approve the redevelopment project for the One Ten Smithville Tax Increment Financing Plan and activating the collection of tax increment financing revenues within the project.
Thank you. Linda, any public comment?
No.
Any new business?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Mr. Mayor and Board, last meeting, there was a a a proposal for to redo the contract with GT Toing. Instead, Alderman Hartman asked for that to be put up for bid, which the board did agree to. I don't know of any problems with with GT Toing. I don't know why this this was asked to go up for bid, but all I know is that I was contacted by several people asking what did they do? Well, I don't know what they did, if they they or he or she did, but I guess going back to what what Mr. McLean said is that if if that's what the first thing that people are going to is what did he do, what did they do, then we have a problem as a board, a perception of this board, that I think we need to address. I think that to to change the what we're doing-
I think the proposal is actually to table the renewal of a existing contract, if I'm correct, not to put it back out to bid, correct? Alderman Hartman, since you're the one who made the proposal?
Yeah, Mayor, it was to table, just to have the city look at that and potentially discuss in a future work session.
Correct, and I believe just a few months ago, Alderman Russell, you proposed something similar with our animal control, when it was no bid set to have that put back out to bid for an extended period of time. So any renewal the board wants to discuss at a work session, I think that is I mean, it was a request to have it discussed at a work session. I mean, that's pretty straightforward. That's not out saying anybody's not getting a contract renewed. It was asking for more details, because when it was originally put out there, I think there was only one bidder, and it was during the middle of the pandemic, when people were not really aware there's bids out there. And we have done the same thing with our banking service, our financial services, and many other RFPs, just in the last couple of years.
Okay, thank you. I just want to make sure that it's fair for, and across the board, that the rules apply to everyone. I'm not saying they don't, but if it's, if it's on renewal, if it's every two years, I think that whatever the standard is, we need to make sure it's set in everybody.
If you, if you go back and read that packet, it was a three-year contract with one-year renewals, I believe. Correct? And that's our standard RFP language. Any other new business? Undertaining motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Mayor, a second.
Thank you. All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. Stand adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
That was quicker than I thought it was, too, Linda. Did it? Well, there's only two things on there, but I knew there was going to be a lot of people here.